I was gonna suggest that, but figured I'd get a little backlash from the other end.
See this?
I noticed it was.
Good.
Always someone from the other.
I had one of them off. It was off because Evergy, Evergy turned it off. I think I got it back on. I hope when it's on, it's supposed to be.
So did you suggest doing that?
I have a study sheet here. There we go. Alrighty. We will get started with the study session. Today, we're going to talk about the Broadway medians. Sounds like a, could be a nice movie or Twilight Zone movie or something.
It's a meaty topic. As you know, we, the staff was able to identify some temporary, or some kind of on the fly things that were opportunities that we took advantage of and, and between Jim Toich, Public Works Director, and Dan Stack, City Engineer, they prepared to walk you through that history a little bit. And there is some interesting history there as how they came to be, some studying that we did and cost estimating that we did that kind of caused us to take a pause on, on solutions and we're, we've not lost sight of the fact that they, they need some attention and we're trying to put together a plan somewhat in-house as resources allow. So I'll turn it over to Jim to, to walk you through what we've come up with so far.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Jim Toich, Director of Public Works. Today, we're here to talk to you about the Broadway medians. And if you would give me the very first slide, I would like to let Mr. Stack get us started with sort of a timeline background where we came from and where we are right now.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Jim, yes, we've, this corridor has transitioned over the years from an old state highway bypass around town until I-35 was built. It's been widened with really wide, wide medians basically over the years. A lot of limited access controls, what, kind of the way the State Department tried to do highways back then for good reasons, but since that is no longer quite as necessary, we've done some median replacements in the, in the past. 1990s, we tried a pilot project. We left in the asphalt curbs, but we put in some grass south of Republic with some trees and does look pretty nice, other than maybe the asphalt medians or the asphalt curbs need replaced. 2018, we had a study with RDG, which is our friend Marty Schuchert from Nebraska. He looked at the corridor and put together some pretty nice concept and visualization and a lot of public involvement to try to see what it could look like and had a pretty high price tag on it. It was a nice vision, but it had, it's just really pretty expensive and so it was not something we could probably do all at one time or right away without some, some funds. And we have, we have applied for some funds from KDOT over the years and just have yet to get anything really substantial. So in 2021, we were milling, just doing our normal maintenance on the road and between, seems like Kent, my, my staff engineer Kent Johnson here and Jim and Mike and it was a pretty interesting transition of events when APAC said, well, we can just mill those out for you. So really, that'd be pretty nice. So they, they're really just asphalt medians and they were milling anyway. It didn't take them a whole lot more just to mill them out, put them, put asphalt in there. So that was really a pretty exciting thing to kind of say, okay, we can at least remove the medians and then look at maybe putting some of them up in the future or doing other things with them, but at least that got us a really open corridor and it's been really well received so far. And it was a fairly reasonably priced thing to just get rid of the medians and pave a very wide lane out there. So you will see that lanes, a pretty wide middle lane, but it's just had a wide median there at the time. So today, we're going to talk more about what our options are for trying to kind of finish the rest of the corridor all the way to Cloud Street because we have those ugly asphalt medians pretty much the whole way. So we're looking to, next slide please, looking to try to get rid of them, shorten them, eliminate them. Really just motorist access, you know, to develop that corridor. We really feel like if we can, you know, without jeopardizing safety or traffic challenges in there, you know, we don't want to just open everything up, but at, at the intersections, we probably have to leave the median. So at State Street, at South Street, at Crawford, Republic, then at Cloud. But other than that, really, we should be able to have a, have a turn lane there or some kind of a way for people to get access to those properties. So that would hopefully allow the development to occur through there with the two-way left turn lanes.
Dan, if I could, one of, one of the things that we learned from 2021 was that the, opening up the corridor that, in, in the way that we did, milling out those medians. Dan mentioned that, one, they were surface mounted, so it was very easy to do. You know, you could, you could literally just take them off and, and put back the roadway. And we were very fortunate that, that that occurred. The goal behind that is to increase access to businesses. That's the primary concern. So the plan going forward, we felt, from the city manager and everyone's staff felt that if, if it's possible for the rest of the corridor, we would like to mimic that idea. As Dan mentioned, unfortunately, there are some medians that cannot be removed due to needing left turn lanes and creating a zone of safety at, at intersections. So while this plan calls for removing medians or shortening medians where we can, we are left with medians that have to be repaired. Our viewpoint from there is if we remove or, or pull back the medians as best we can to increase access to businesses, those medians that remain need that old dilapidated crumbling asphalt curb and cap removed and something a little more substantial and more aesthetically pleasing for the corridor to put in. So the, the, the rest of this plan is going to talk about how we think we can accomplish that. So I, I guess I just kind of wanted to get that out.
Yeah, our options really repair considerations are the, well, you'll, we'll see it later really, the landscaping, brick, grass, trees, ziriscaping, you know, we've got those different kind of options around town. And really just get rid of the crumbling asphalt medians and curbs. There's a good example right there. There's a good looking asphalt curb with an asphalt median, which is not what we want. This actually isn't horrible. This is at State Street. It's a concrete median with a concrete, or concrete curbs with a concrete cap. So we felt like that's probably something we can live with at this point. You guys can tell us otherwise if we think we need to do something with that one. Well, that one's decent, doesn't have a lot of weeds and it doesn't, it doesn't look as unsightly. Those are at State Street, they're, we can shorten them and then just put a, put a concrete curb on it and it's, it's fairly easy to do. So we actually have that in our project for this year at State Street, just, just north of, north of State basically, to try and give access to the, the US, the UPS, no, not UPS.
U-Haul?
U-Haul, U-Haul dealer there. Thank you. The U-Haul dealer, which is, had a struggle there for a lot of years because the U-Haul guys always come in and have to turn around in the park and try to figure out how to get to that property. So it'll really, I believe it'll help.
I take it that you can paint the concrete and it looks good, better or longer than that asphalt would. I mean, that's unpainted, right?
Yeah, that's unpainted.
Aesthetically, look a lot better if it had some paint on it.
Yeah, we've done colored concrete in the past and sometimes that's, that's kind of helpful. That could be one of the options here.
One of the, one of the things about this slide that we want to sort of bring home is that all of these need new concrete curbing. What goes around to hold these medians together. So the, the top part of these tables, this first part is going to be required for all the medians that have to stay. We need to get rid of the old asphalt curbing and replace the curbing around the edge of the medians with concrete. Regardless of what we do in the middle of the, the medians, that is part of the, the base price that we're just going to have to have in order to properly repair these medians. And then the other two are what you would do with the cap, whether you want to install grass and trees, whether you want to do ziriscaping or whether you want to do something else, but it's the curbing plus what you want to do to the cap as you're looking at the rest of these slides.
$55 a foot is kind of what we have for just the curbing. So that's kind of the base price. Go to the next slide, please.
What's the speed out there?
Forty.
And Ohio is the same speed?
Forty, mm-hmm, yep.
With no medians? Well, maybe at Crawford.
A little bit in Crawford there and that's really the only, is that the only place? Yeah, that's about right. This is kind of just an example of the, of the grass and trees. This is just south of Republic. You can see it does still have the, the ugly asphalt curb, but you don't notice it quite as much because the middle looks kind of nice. But either way, this is, we would still replace the asphalt curbs with concrete curbs here, but we wouldn't really have to do anything other than grass and trees here unless, unless you, unless we wanted to change it. Next slide, please. Then here's the ziriscaping that we have out on East, East Magnolia. So it's, it's fairly pricey to put that in. So as you can see, it's quite a bit more expensive. And arguably is the yearly maintenance that much more. Our Parks guys say that it is and they don't have to do a lot during the year. They don't have to mow it, which is nice, but that takes quite a bit of maintenance to cut those all back and mess with the rocks and make sure it's functioning as it does because it, it, they have a tendency, that's weird, medians just have a tendency to get run over. They just do. So it's, you know, grass is not as big a deal. They don't typically hit the trees, but for some reason, these do get run over more. So they have to deal with that more. Next slide, please. Our, just, we're going to go through kind of our phasing plan, just we think that we can kind of phase this in over a few years. Three years to be, to be exact, we're kind of looking at this first year, which we've done most of the medians between State Street and Crawford. And then we transitioned south of Crawford, Franklin, DeVal, Republic to Franklin, and then, and then Dover to Republic.
One thing I guess I would point out here, because you may, you may wonder why there are two years for each of these phases. Part of that is due to COVID, due to the current market, due to just the, the lack of materials or the, the extended period of time it takes to get materials. We've found that if you allow a contractor a longer period of time to complete the job, then you're likely, one, to get more bids, you're going to get better bids because they'll have time to gather the materials and, and source all of the things that are required for a job. So our thought is if, like for example, the very first one, if we let a contract in 2022, it may not actually be finished building until the following year. So we wanted to allow that extended window to maximize our opportunity for getting contractors and getting good bids. That was kind of the thought process behind that.
Yeah, we do believe if we get direction today, we can probably advertise a project this year, but getting anything built after, after here pretty soon is going to be tough this year. So it would just stretch into next, to next year. Here's the State Street intersection, like we talked about a little earlier. These are all concrete medians. That's why the white. Next slide, please. Each slide, Jacob is kind of, there you go. It just changes a little bit. So here's kind of our ideas. We'd cut back to here to allow the access to the U-Haul dealer. And then we'd get to cut this one back a little ways as well, just kind of mirror both sides. That's about the, the amount of area that we need for the left turn lane. And so then that allows access to the, the filling station here, the quick shop and as well as across the street. We, you know, we just don't know how this corridor could develop someday or, or may have some opportunities to develop. And so minimum distance of, at each intersection. Next slide, please.
And just to highlight, that first part, it says that it's part of the 2022 mill and inlay. So that's, that contract's already out and so that, you'll see that
That one will happen.
particular median happen sooner
Right.
than all the others.
What is the, the suggested distance for the median, you know, from the intersection on, or does that depend on how many curb cuts you have that? Because obviously you don't want people turning
Right.
where into those. So is, does it just depend on what you have as far as curb cuts on each side of the street as to far, how far back that median needs to go?
I would say it's really mostly related to the stacking for traffic. So it depends on if it's a 10,000 cars a day or 3,000 cars a day. You don't need as much stacking, you know, at a certain intersection.
Because obviously you'd need more at Crawford than you need at State Street.
Right, State Street's longer.
So that's how you just find your.
Yes, that's the idea. You know, this, this was done, this corridor was done by KDOT, so we didn't propose any, any changes really to that stuff, but it's, it's, um, yeah, you'll see that this is at South Street and it's a certain distance. Crawford's a little longer than, than State. State is not as much traffic as, as these two. So we weren't planning to change them. We're just trying to shorten them up to the minimum that would need to be to keep what's there basically.
And I guess my other question is, when I was driving, just kind of looking at it, Crawford, when you get to Broadway, doesn't have a, a median. So I, so I was questioning, did you need the median on Broadway then?
Oh, no, you're right, yeah. And neither does, yeah, Crawford at Ohio doesn't either. So I mean, it's, it's, most traffic engineers would say you do, but it's, it's a little bit of fend for yourself at some of those intersections and the medians help to kind of control that a little bit, but not every city does that. You can just, it's.
But that's the thing that the medians do. It gives pedestrians a place to stand if they get stuck halfway across in that lane.
Yeah, it's a little safe haven for those and it's, yeah, we have them kind of hodgepodge in Ohio and Crawford. We only really have them not, we're not real far back at Ohio, it, on the north and south sides of Crawford there. So these were done by KDOT and they're longer, quite a bit longer than they are at Ohio.
Does it break logic or safety to just put a cut through in there?
Yeah, if you drive.
Down south where the school system built a great big warehouse, we just punched a cut through.
Yeah, that one's far enough from the intersection that's, it's a little better. You, you'll notice that Crawford and Ohio, we have a no left turn onto Prescott right there. And I mean, how many people said, do it anyway? They just stop, stop traffic and people rearing them or they, you know, everybody gets excited and that's why that no left turn signal's there because it, it messes up the entire flow of the, of the area. So it's, so if you didn't have that there, you wouldn't have to worry about it. If you had a median, the distance that you probably should there, it wouldn't, you wouldn't have to worry about that. So it's, is what it is, but you have more accidents because of it that way. So it's, we try to keep, we're trying to keep the medians here just like they were. But we are shorting them quite a bit. So in this case, South Street, we cut back to just the minimum, just for the turn basically. And then that would give access to this property and any redevelopment that ACE might do someday, as well as, as this one here. I think we've cut that back about as far as we could. Yeah, we did that actually with last year's project.
So does that get you into the Soil Conservation Service?
Yeah, we're not there yet, but we will. That's, that's, that's what we're going to do south of Crawford. This is just South Street.
Oh, okay.
We're still up at ACE and Kmart, Kmart's right over here. You can see kind of just the pictures, Kent, put the pictures in here of how pretty those, those medians do look. I think we painted them yellow at some point in the past and it's faded off. So it's pretty nasty looking. Next slide, please. Here's Crawford. So yeah, those are quite a bit longer. Those are, those are a lot longer actually. And that's kind of if you, if you really have, you know, this is a 15,000 ADT corridor here. There's a lot of cars. This is the third highest in town right here. So it's a very, very busy corridor. And yeah, if you had medians on Crawford, that would probably limit and help our accidents there, but we don't. We don't have a lot of room for them. It's been put in that way and it is what it is now, but it'd be hard to remove them anywhere in this area really. We, we would just propose, next slide, please. Just propose that we would replace them with brick, replace the asphalt curbs with concrete and then replace the medians with brick, make them look a little bit nicer. Next slide, please. All right, here's the, the soil conservation area, just south of the Dylan's or the old, the old Wendy's, I date myself. That's the old Wendy's there. I'm not sure what it is now. South of Big Cheese basically. But we could, we could definitely pull this one back. There's not a lot of traffic in this area conflicting movements or anything to, to warrant this massive, it's, that's a really large median. So that's one we feel like we could really make it look pretty nice. We can pull it back, give access to the Natural Resources Conservation, the Seoul, USA Korean Restaurant. There it is, right, right in there. And then we can replace the asphalt caps with either brick, grass and trees or brick and ziriscaping. So those are two kind of options there. And that one, that would be quite a bit area. It'd be a nice, nice big median to make it look nice.
Do you have a picture of that showing how far back you would?
Just this green thing right here. It's kind of about right where we thought we could put it back to, which give, which allows the turns in and the, and the, and you can get back out. We can't, we didn't figure we needed to go all the way down there. But at least it gives that, that property good in and out access.
I think that'd be helpful.
Yep. Next slide, please. Franklin to Republic, similar. There's nothing, there's no access through here, no access issues. So the, the median is just there for, good question, I guess. It's just, it's, it could be a really nice looking median.
Matchup with the rest.
Yeah.
Well, I assume it's a remnant from when it was a KDOT.
When it was an old highway, yeah, that's right. Before they developed both sides with housing, I guess. But yeah, it's, it's a nice big median.
And that is part of the question. They're, they're really, we, we're not opening up the corridor by removing the median in this case. So then does that kind of fall to the design criteria number two that says, well then, let's do something to make it more aesthetically pleasing. So we thought, because there is no value gained by removing the median here, because there's no place to turn into, let's use this opportunity to try to make this median as nice as we can to improve the look of the corridor. Obviously, you could tell us otherwise and we could pull that median out, but it would be, it would be a twiddle to nowhere, unfortunately.
Is that not one of those that can just be knocked off like the prior ones?
No, you're right, it could.
It could.
It could.
In this case, it could.
Yep.
Because it's an asphalt one. But the, the, the two turns, there, there's nowhere to turn to.
Yeah, there's no turns anywhere in here.
You'd be left with an expanse of pavement and a lane that serves no purpose.
Right.
Right in the middle of the.
My reflection, we get down to this part of Broadway. This is the part that just looks awful.
Yes, absolutely.
That's the, that's the median right there. You can see it's
Weeds growing in it.
Weeds, cracked seal, crumbled holes in it.
Yeah.
It's a little overdue, long overdue. You're right. Next slide, please. Here's south of Republic to Dover. Kind of the railroad tracks down in here. There aren't any turns in this area either, so there's no reason to remove the median. We just need to make it look nice. So it's, most of it really does actually. We've got brick here. We would, I think we have brick here. Is that right, Kent? Okay, so that, that median's really in pretty good shape. There's not a lot of extra to do there other than curb it. The curbs are crumbling. And sometimes that ends up getting into some of the curb inlets, but it's, that's really kind of an aside, but.
This is the area that floods, isn't it?
I'm glad you asked that. Definitely a flood area. Yeah, the, they improved these ditches over the years. These ditches on both sides are storage detention for flooding in this area. So I don't know how bad it floods, but it's, there was a, there was a
Potential to flood for sure.
Yeah, and there was a, a project in the, before I got here, in the, in the 2000s, early 90s, maybe 90s, but they tried to take that into account and give the area as much storage as possible.
The median doesn't have anything to do with that.
Doesn't really here, no. It just takes the water, the median's the high point, takes the water to the outside and just kind of gets, keeps it on the outsides of the road.
I drove that the other day and I did notice that down there toward the curb, there is a storm grain in the median.
Right, there's a few of them. Yeah.
Yep.
So that has improved the street flooding.
I haven't, I don't know. Don't know. It's, trying to remember if it's on the floodplain maps. We can look and see, but yeah, that, I just know that we've, we've been, we've tried to put a sidewalk, I mean, a trail in here. It'd be nice to have a, there's no sidewalk in this corridor at all. It's just really kind of frustrating. And there's a park just to the south of here and we could connect to a sidewalk at Crawford, but it's really hard to figure out how to put a sidewalk and fill these ditches in because they were actually opened up and made that way because they store water. So it's, it's a challenge to try to say, oh, let's just go put a sidewalk in and fill back in the ditch, which seems easy when you're driving by there, but it's, it's not, not as easy to do.
Unless you capture that capacity and put it all underground, but obviously then that's a significant price tag to do something like that.
Yeah, I, I was going to make this observation later, but I'll make it now. The, you know, historically, I think this has been a little out of sight, out of mind because of the price tag. And we improved the, the driving surface, but we didn't do anything with the medians and we've just kind of set it aside as, as too expensive. We're trying to find a way to wedge this into the street maintenance plan among all of our other costs and priorities. So that's why we're kind of breaking it into years and that's why we're trying to be as strategic as we are, recognizing, you know, the aesthetics of it, but we don't have the funds to go in and, and enclose all that open ditch with, enclosed storm sewer pipe and, and really rework the corridor much further than this.
Now, that is not to say after these next three, if, if you were to agree that these phases should be done and we, we move forward with these, that we couldn't continue this as a process and continue to make incremental improvements to the corridor. More in keeping with what the 2018 study that Dan referenced had in mind and, and we could do it that way and just continue to take sections at a time and, and make those improvements to get this corridor up to what we would all like to see it as and, and what its potential really, you know, should be and could be.
Next slide, please. This is south or, not south, not quite south of railroad tracks yet, but we're getting close to the old Con's Organics is down here now. The old putt putt golf course used to be there. This is just a median that's, can be, could be really nice. Could be a nice looking, either grass or ziriscaping or something better than the asphalt that's there. Doesn't need any access really because they've got the access necessary.
Probably needs to be said here, this one, obviously, we'll have to look at where those stop bars are located and determine what we can actually fit into the median so that we maintain proper line of sight in both directions for the railroad. But it is, as you know, Dan mentioned, and as you can see, it's a, it's a wide meeting, median, and the opportunity to do something nice here certainly exists. We'll just have to be cognizant of the railroad and make sure that we're far enough back that we don't impede lines of sight.
Next slide, please.
How much rail traffic does that see?
That one's a very low use rail traffic there. Very low use. Talking of a train, a
Commissioner Long, the audio is, your audio is not being picked up? Okay.
It's on now, okay. Uh, this is the next median, Army Reserve Midwest Siding Area. Just a nice median though, or a, a nice possible improvement to a median. It's not a nice median as you can see, but it's a no need to change it or do any different thing. Just put the new curbs on it, get rid of the asphalt and make it something nicer. Next slide, please. Then lastly, we're down to Cloud. So this, this median serves as kind of the lengthy turn lane for Cloud. And the Army Reserve is right here and they have a turn lane into it. So this one would mostly just probably be bricking it or doing something better than the asphalt junk that's there now. Next slide, please. All right, now we get to the costs. Just looking at the options and the costs. First corridor we looked at, the reason these are similar, there really isn't any areas for brick, grass or trees, or I mean for brick. There is, the, basically that's, that's what we would do there. They're going to be brick medians with concrete curbs. There's no real areas that we could put in ziriscaping or grass or trees in that corridor from Ash through Crawford. They're just, they're not long enough or big enough for it. South of Crawford, we start ending up with quite a bit of area where we can put in some grass and trees. As you can see there, you know, 255 to 400 approximately, depending on what we do there for putting that in there. The 194 is just, just the removing and replacing the curbs. Kent, are these, does this add 255? Is that what that does? Or does it become two, that's total. Okay, so it goes from 194 to 255. So that's just something to take into account. We're not adding 255, we're just adding 60-ish in that case for this or, or another hundred-ish for, is that 200, 194, three? Okay, so 200 for, for the ziriscaping. It's a lot more. Republic to Cloud, similar situation. It's just 287 to add the, just to remove and replace the curbs. And then not too much to put in grass and trees and then a little bit more to do the ziriscaping. That was a really cool project, but fairly, fairly pricey and really pricey now to, to do, it seems like. Annual maintenance, as we talked about, it's, you know, for the amount of money that we're spending on either one, it's a fairly small potatoes number, but it's, it is, in, in the, in the percentage wise, yeah, it's three times as much per the Parks guys to do ziriscaping because it really doesn't cost us a lot, I guess, just to go out there and mow it.
So one of the considerations that, that I thought of here is, and it, you know, this will weigh in on how, whatever you decide. There was the one intersection that's all, or I mean, the one median that's already on Broadway that has grass and trees. So as, as we went through this presentation, you saw that generally we're, it's staff's opinion that the grass and tree option makes sense. It, it doesn't seem It it doesn't seem to make sense to zerscape the other medians and then leave the grass and trees in in some of the medians on Broadway. So if you went with the zerscaping option, then we would, you know, probably want to go back and zerscape the medians that currently have grass and trees in them. So we weren't sure that that seemed to make sense.
Guess I would disagree with that to an extent because I think the portions of that that are are commercial, I like a line of sight there and the things that are going to obstruct that line of sight, I don't think they have to match north of Crawford and south of Crawford either. The trees are fine down there in the residential area, but to my way of thinking, something low to the ground and more just for aesthetics is better where the commercial portions are.
Can you define the zerscaping?
Yeah, it's the East Magnolia.
Can you go back to the East Magnolia picture?
It's a zerscaping is very drought friendly plants and rock, a lot of rock, looks a little Arizona-ish, but those those plants, there's no irrigation in there at all and those things thrive like you wouldn't believe. I guess you do if you see it, they they grow like crazy and then we have to cut them back every so often.
And this particular design has the the creek bed, the the dry creek bed in it, but when it when it there's a lot of rain, then that that's actually where it's going to hold and carry water for the for the plantings there.
But you still have to go out and water those, don't you?
I don't know. Do they water those? I mean, Jim, you live there.
I do not believe that they do. I think the only maintenance that they do is periodically throughout the year, they come out and uh, trim trim things back. They have to weed them. It is, it's, you know, three times the the maintenance of the grass and trees, just in terms of cost.
Yeah, I think we had a.
But but no, I do not believe that they water them.
There's there's no irrigation on the Broadway, grass and trees out there, is there?
Nope.
Nope.
And just to be clear, we would do drought resistant or drought tolerant grass.
That's my next question.
So when we talk about zerscaping in in the reverse, we're not saying that it would be, you know, water dependent grass in the.
South Ninth is an example where we we have to water it quite a bit. It's vescue grass and high water usage. This is, we're not proposing that here. If you look at the median south of Cloud as well, we did that when I first got here in late 2000s. We just buffalo grass, trees, and it's done pretty well.
Delta trees on Belmont Boulevard look pretty good.
Belmont and where?
Oh, Belmont Boulevard, when you turn off of Ohio Street and one towards Ninth.
It just seems like they've cut a lot of those out. Yeah, they're kind of cut out now thanks to Evergy. I don't, it's.
Well, I don't blame Evergy there. Some of that was the condition of the trees. We were taking them out because and not to say that they can't be replaced, but they were failing. And to your prior point, we don't have to have trees in all locations.
Nope, we don't.
You could have turf and and some low shrubs.
That's kind of why we're here today. Thought we'd better get some direction and.
The brick cap did is, how do they prevent weeds from going in that?
Well, we have a.
I see that there's never a weed problem here on Magnolia.
Two, two things. One, they'll do landscape fabric and two, there'll be a layer of sand that the brick sits on. Both would aid.
They have a concrete base, too. I mean, the bricks have a concrete base. There's no landscape fabric because it's it's a concrete base, a little bit of sand and then bricks. So typically, that's all we need there.
And we we actually took a hard look at that. Surprisingly, those bricks don't seem to grow a lot of, you know, they take on weeds and they maintain themselves pretty well.
Comparatively, the 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 concrete at the, you know, wherever there's seams or gaps, there's opportunity for weeds to to grow. They're going to find a way to grow if they can. And then I I think it's just a combination of of all those things that we mentioned that, for whatever reason, it seems that, like Mike said, the the pavers seem to do really well at help reducing the amount.
Our brick streets?
Yeah.
I don't really notice, I mean, not every portion of roadway is driven on, but there aren't that many weeds in it.
Yeah, those are a concrete base, sand and then brick, so it's similar similar case there. I was trying to look at the one at Broadway and Cloud to see how well it's doing with the weeds, but the newer ones that we've bid out on like North Ninth with when we did the kind of landscaping project on North Ninth Street, those are good example of concrete bricks and I don't think they have any weeds. They're they're solid, still in pretty good shape and they're 10, 12 years old now. So that's that's what we're proposing here as well. Could you go to slide 26, Jacob? So just looking at available funding, like we said, it's trying to space it out. We have some funds available each year. We have, you know, a lot of asphalt maintenance that we have to do, so we're not tapping into that. We still have to do our normal normal routine, but each year we get some federal fund exchange dollars. We get some, you know, we don't always do a railroad crossing project, have some, sometimes some of our projects come in, you know, with a million dollar project and a 5% contingency. If they don't actually get into those contingencies, we start saving some money and then we have a little money left at the end of the year. So we really have, we feel like we could squeeze in a couple hundred thousand dollars a year and be able to get something done here if if we get this approved today. So moving on to the next slide, please. And our recommendations are, like we've really talked about, just shortening them, increasing access. This is for 2223, so we're really just talking about Cool Construction, the Quickstar, Quickstar Convenience Gas Station there. Nor this is near Ace Hardware, the Affordable Cuts, which is on the west side of Broadway there. We'd increase access for them and for the businesses in there and then South and Crawford, just replacing them with concrete curbs and brick instead of the asphalt that's there. So that's our proposal for this year, or we felt like if we could actually get it designed and bid this year, but we just we can't guarantee we can get it constructed this year. It seems like it's just hard to get workers to get it done quickly. Next slide is really just the kind of just looking at, I guess I should have used this to explain, kind of here's Crawford, what we talked about. These, you know, they turn, this was the median that we would get to shorten and make. Guess this one's two slides. Yeah, this is at Broadway and, yeah, there we go. There's Broadway.
South to Ash.
Yeah, there's the the Ash, Ash and South Quarter. There's the Ace Hardware and making this one shorter. Next slide, 24, 2324 is similar cost really, shortening the median like we talked about. And then 22, 2425, similar cost as well. So next slide, you can just kind of see the overall overall medians. This is a good example of, it's a lot of median out there south of Crawford. That's a massive amount of median. So it's it's a, it looked pretty bad. It could really look pretty nice if we could do this project. Next slide, there we go, a lot of median there as well. So I think that's it. We can answer questions and talk talk more.
Just curious, do we have any traffic studies that suggest the median on Magnolia slows the traffic down?
The median where, sir?
On East Magnolia. Does that have a calming effect on traffic? Of course, it's only one lane, but in each direction.
Yeah, I need, we don't have a study just necessarily for that, but there's just a lot of studies over the years that talk about, you know, narrower lanes and constrictions. People just generally drive slower and if you have ice wide open spaces, you can't make them go slower. They just too safe and they want to fly. You know, South Ohio is an example of that. It's a really nice wide open four lane concrete road and I find myself going faster than 40 there, seems like. It just, it's easy. Whereas when you're on Crawford or East Magnolia there, it's a little narrower and you it's a little harder to go faster.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but part of that conversation as well was that median may turn into driving surface if the the traffic counts increase and we have need for additional capacity.
On East on East Magnolia, yes, that's correct. That median is there for future growth as well.
But traffic engineers would say median's much like a traffic circle. If if a motorist feels nervous when they're driving, generally, they sit upright, they look straight ahead, they put both hands at 10 and 2, and they're much more cautious in in the way that they drive. And and narrowing lanes, creating creating spaces that make you want to focus on the road generally leads to safer driving practices. At least that is what I think traffic engineers across the United States would say.
I think of all the entrances into the city coming in on, once you get past that little narrow bridge on East Magnolia, it's the prettiest entrance into town.
Yeah.
For what it's worth, that that landscaping was designed by a former employee, Bob Ash. He, that was kind of one of his projects as he approached retirement and I I think it turned out great.
Yeah, we we feel like as as Commissioner Ryan talked about, the the area north of Crawford is very business more, this is more of a business corridor. It's just all there is to it. It doesn't lend itself real well to grass and trees and zerscaping, but.
And I I will say in 2021, when I was standing in front of Waters on that with the contractor.
Ace.
Ace, thank you. I apologize to Ace. When I was standing on that median with the contractor and we were sort of just visioning how we were going to do this beyond 2021, I will admit that what I said to staff at that time was, this needs a Magnolia-esque touch. The only the only reason why that recommendation in in this briefing changed was that was purely a a fiscal consideration where we think we have the funds to do either. It's really what your direction, what you would like to see and and we would like to be able to phase it in, that's probably the key. In order to do this as part of the operational budgets, we would need to do it in as a phased approach, but we would certainly be open to either of those design options based on what you commissioners would choose.
I would say you can see what our cost challenges have gotten us so far. We've just held out and done nothing. And so we've made an asserted effort to try to come up with a solution to get this behind us.
Well, if I live there and walk my dog, I walk myself in the neighborhood, I'd much rather look at what's in the middle of Magnolia than just a concrete brick median. Plus, I think it, you know, unfortunately, Broadway has two personalities. I mean, it's commercial north of Crawford and it's basically residential south, but it's a fast residential because people are speeding to get down to Ninth Street. But but it's still primarily residential, you know, so I'd like to go more for the aesthetics.
And just to be clear, I don't, where they're proposing brick is where the width of it kind of dictates brick. So I don't know that it's a question of brick versus the zerscaping in Magnolia as much as it's a question of turf and trees versus zerscaping at Magnolia and the the cost difference between those two.
Yeah, we really feel like we have to put brick in where they're really narrow. That's that's what's going, really has to happen. You can't put grass in there. I guess the zerscaping has kind of a rubber mulch. You can do that, but if you look at East Magnolia, the rubber mulch is kind of wavy and it struggled a little bit. So it's, you can direct us in that direction, but we didn't think that's the best idea.
And and the difference between Magnolia and Broadway is there's no walking paths on Broadway. You know, Magnolia, you have it on both sides, but.
It's the hope, not yet.
Yeah, I don't think there's any aesthetic fix for north of Crawford. I mean, there's the power lines are up there and the telephone poles and it's just a commercial corridor to me. So I I think replacing the asphalt curbs, if that's the plan there, that makes sense. When you go south, you could it makes sense to get it more involved in the aesthetics as you go south of Crawford.
Yeah, we're, that's what we're proposing, I guess. Do you guys have a preference?
You're kind of down the middle there with brick, grass and trees south of Crawford.
That's what we're thinking, but if you're directors towards zerscaping, we can.
Yeah.
And Mike said it, we had an in-house guy that did. He's not here anymore, so there's a little bit of figure out how to do that or recreate it again. Might be a little more of a challenge. Grass and trees, we kind of feel like we can do, but zerscaping might be tougher.
You you get into zero scape, you got additional cost and then we continue to to run into staffing issues with with maintaining it and there's nothing worse than having something you're not maintaining, so.
The the truth is, because this is, this isn't our department that has to deal with that maintenance. It is the Parks Department and and they, much like us, are critically short of people. It does put an additional burden on them. The benefit of the grass and trees is the grass, we have a citywide mowing contract that is very reasonably priced and we're able to do it and that's why the maintenance costs are lower for the grass and trees. That's that's not saying that we can't do either, though, by any means. It's it's really whatever you all would, you know, tell us you would like us to do and then that's the direction that we would pursue.
I'm curious if the option of artificial grass has been explored because I know that that product has changed quite a bit in the last decade and is a lot more realistic looking. Is that something that we've looked into at all or is it just too cost prohibitive from the get go?
I I have not. It's it's definitely an interesting idea.
Yeah.
Because I've seen some of the products in other parts of the country and it's surprising how.
Realistic.
They look nice. They even will intermix different shades of like brown or kind of a lighter green to give it a more realistic look and it's it's not like the old Brady Bunch days.
Is it green in January?
It's true, yeah. Green year round.
Kind of strange here.
I mean, honestly, and I, this isn't something that we had staffed, but I mean, I guess it isn't out of the realm of possibility that we could not create options, ask contractors to bid on them and then come back to you with, you know, with actual costs for the various designs.
Does it turn brown in the winter like everything else?
And you'd have to put up, you know, no putting signs in the median.
We use it on the curbs for the medians.
It might have athletic lines painted on it. If it helps at all, just based on the estimates that staff's prepared, the cost difference between turf and zerscaping is about a 28% premium for the zerscaping or about a quarter of a million dollars more. That's assuming the estimates hold and to Jim's point, we could, you know, bid alternates.
Yes.
Contractors may get tired of bidding those alternates if they historically go with the cheaper alternative all the time, but.
I I kind of like the grass and maybe some trees or maybe some some bushes at different, you know, to give you some different heights and different areas that would be drought resistant, but I'd probably lean that direction just from a cost, cost standpoint.
Bushes will, like I said, change the elevation and it's not just grass and trees.
Right.
What kind of grass are we using now?
Buffalo is what's out there now on South of Cloud and I believe that's what's in the Republic as well. So Buffalo's, it's fairly low maintenance. It's, I don't know.
How's that new blend of Bermuda doing on, it's the park off of Center Street?
That's a good question. I wish Rick's talked about that or not, but.
I I have not talked to him about it.
We'd have to probably consult with them on the best grass because, yeah, we're not wanting to put vescue and high, any kind of, I mean, vescue you can actually put out there, but it's just K31, just kind of clumpy and may or may not do well. So, yeah, it seems like it's, we're looking at either a Bermuda mix or some kind of a buffalo mix just to kind of keep the maintenance and low water situation down.
And and not to weigh in too much, but Jim's other point, I think, has a lot of merit and that is I'd prefer that we do what we do well, not overshoot the mark and then set ourselves up for falling behind on maintenance and turf with a few bushes and a little bit of of landscaping is in our wheelhouse or can be contracted a heck of a lot easier.
I'm kind of glad you said that because when you mentioned the word alternates, I said, ah, no, that that's, I mean, something like this, I want to say, this is what we want. Bid on it.
Like that.
You know, we don't want, expect, get this type of grass, right, and then you come back and it's sand and a few little.
If there's consensus, and it sounds like maybe we're gravitating towards something better than what we have and.
Anything's better than what we have, but I I think, yeah, bricking where you're able to using some type of grass with some trees and bushes that are drought resistant, I think it's going to.
And change elevation, I think I heard you say.
Yeah, I just think use it a little something different, you know, maybe as you're closer. Well, and I know the zero scape really looks nice, but you would have problems doing that if you had a lot of curb of cuts because it's dense. I know there's that one house that you you pull into if you're going east and it's hard to see traffic coming from from one direction and so the way that's built, you know, you would have a hard time if you had very many turn lanes or curb cuts there, I think.
So the process will be to tear out what's there and start over essentially.
Yeah, and it's interesting that some of those, they did have asphalt below them, so you have to dig out and put in something that the, you know, dirt or something, some kind of good soil that that we can sustain this with because.
But the curb and everything is asphalt, huh?
Yep, yep, it is. It's just a piece of asphalt. So then you actually have to saw cut kind of where you want the new line to be, where your curb's going to be because it's it's you're making a new cut. It's just it's just one glob of asphalt on top of the. it's just one glob of asphalt on top of the, what's there.
I don't know if it's there anymore, but there was a section where it looked like a duly truck drove through the median. It got no resistance whatsoever. It just left tire tracks right through the.
It's still there.
It's still there, I think, yeah.
I wondered how many here remember when Ohio was all, had all medians.
I have a vague recollection of it.
It was all grass. They mowed it and.
Really?
Had concrete curbs.
Okay.
Wow. Didn't know that.
I did not.
I assume that it came out to accommodate additional traffic, would be my guess, but.
Yep.
So this is a three-year plan, and, and we're kind of more fixated on the first year. Well, this will come back to us in the budget in the next two years, won't it?
Yeah, you'll see it in the budget each year, be the hope.
But at least now you know what to budget for.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll meet back at four o'clock.
Okay.[79.63]